I'd like to call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, August 16th at about 7:00 PM here at the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice and according to our Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present except for Trustee Peiper, who is excused. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item is President's Report. Not too much to report tonight. There is an event on Saturday at noon on Main Street. Gales is having a ribbon cutting for their new addition. And so if anybody wants to view that or participate and watch that, that will be at noon with some presentations from representatives of Gales Foods and there will be also some Village representation. I'll be there as well at noon. So please come if you'd like, or if you're in the area, please stop by. That's all I have to report for President's Report, so we can go to announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. We'll do committee reports and committee chairs, starting with Trustee Miller.
General Government and Finance met tonight, and we will meet again on September 20th, Monday, September 20th, at 6:00 PM.
All right. Trustee Myers.
Mr. President, the Public Safety will meet September 20th at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports they'd like to bring forward? If there's nothing else, then we can go on to the next item, which is Citizen Input and Public Appearance on Items Not Subject to a Public Hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. If there is anyone within our audience or has joined us via WebEx that would like to come forward and speak during Citizen Input or Public Appearance, all I ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to come forward? Yes, ma'am. I need you to come all the way up to the front, because people would like to see you on television. Just put the microphone so that, first push the button on the bottom so the light goes off, and then kind of bring it down towards you so that, yep, so you can speak directly into it. Thank you.
My name is Renee Simerlein, and my address is North 113 West 1293 Crestview Drive. For approximately eight years, we've been putting up with a very loud, disturbing noise from the outdoor hazardous waste incinerator currently located at the Sterling Tank Farm. We have contacted our trustee a number of times. Last time, we provided an audio recording of the sound when he visited us at our home in April of 2021. We have yet to receive a response. Sterling's drilling processes hazardous waste, running a thermal oxidizer, basically a jet engine. Its high-velocity exhaust has pushed up a stack 43 tall. The noise is emitted at 43 feet per second, traveling to our location on above, about the same vertical level as our home. And from their website, quote, "Sterling in the community. We aim to be a force for good in the community. Communities in which we work and our employees live are important to us. Aim to be a caring and considerate neighbor and be a force for good in the community." Unquote. The sound has disturbed our sleep many nights, and it's totally unacceptable. We cannot open windows to enjoy cold nights. I have lived at this location for 49 years. Cannot believe that the village would allow this harassment. When this business park was built, it was set to be business, not have industrious, industrial. Not to say.
We appreciate you coming forward and bringing this to our attention.
It's unacceptable.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for Citizen Input or Public Appearance at this time? Or is there anyone that is joining us online that would like to participate? Okay. Anyone in the audience? All right. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which would be Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve A through E.
Motion made to approve Consent Agenda, items A through E. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? Trustee Myers.
Just a disclaimer under C, that's not my company. Nobody in my relation is approved also.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification. Trustee Jan Miller.
If we have questions on individual items like C or E, shall we discuss that now?
Well, if you want to have it pulled, you can, and then those questions can come forward. So the vote would then be for any of the Consent Agenda items that are not requested to be pulled, and the reason for pulling it would be because you have questions.
Okay.
But you have to have a motion.
Correct.
Right. I would like to pull item D as in David, and also E as in Edward.
Any further discussion? Then we'll vote on Consent Agenda, items A through C, and we'll have further discussion on D and E. So we'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers. Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Consent Agenda, item D, 2021 Seal Coat Projects Award of Contract. Trustee Jan Miller.
Yes. In this seal coating, the only attachment I had was for the bid for seal coating for the, and contracted. I don't know if this went on a bid situation. That's my question. Was this a bid situation?
It did. There was only one respondent, is my understanding.
Oh.
This should be before public works. For a touch.
So what is the question again? Was it publicly bid?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we only got one response?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe you should stay there. I don't know. Are you, are you the sewer guy, too?
Yes.
Okay.
He's not the sewer guy, but it's part of his overview.
No, don't mean.
He has answers.
I don't think he wants to be known as the sewer guy.
Hi, guy.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Larry.
Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
There were seven proposals that you received on this. That's great. The award is going to Rusek?
Chek.
Kuchek? But there is a, in the bottom, there's a contingency of 5% or $77,777. So in the bid, did you ask for contingencies from the other companies?
No, these aren't from the companies. They're not part of the bid. It's just what staff asks for, so that we have some weight in managing the contract for to do some change orders, or if something were to come up where we wanted to add some work. Just a matter that we, that way, it's an approval up to that amount.
Okay. So the request is from the department?
Correct.
Not from the contractor?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
There will be motions to approve.
Motion approved. See, D and E consent order.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on those motions to approve? Not, we'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers. Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Before we go on to unfinished business, I'd like to go back with the board's approval to Citizen Input and Public Appearance. There is a communication that I forgot to enter into the record. All right. With the board?
Yep.
Okay. Then we did receive one communication earlier today, and I'll read it. It's, "Mr. President and Village Board, two weeks ago, I asked the Village Board to reconsider their action on the fire protection fee required by the Public Service Commission, PSC. My issue is that the way the additional amount of this fee is only going to be applied to the water utility user only. This fee, according to the PSC guidelines, is to be applied to the service area, which in this case is the whole village. We know that if a house fire occurs outside the utility area, that the fire department will use water from the nearest hydrant to fight the house fire or grass fire. It should be pointed out that this village's expansion of the water utility was created, has created residents that do not have utility bills but have hydrants by their property. Also, there are residents that receive utility bills that do not have municipal water. A policy that would require all residents to share equally the cost of fire protection would be not changed the action taken by this board. The cost is small now, but as the pressure grows on the village's budget, that cost will grow because the village has opened the door. Again, I ask the Village Board to review this and to be fair to all residents in the village. Please do not create a greater financial burden for some residents because of where they live." And that is presented to us by Resident Art Zabel. That takes care of all communications that I received under Citizen Input and Public Appearance. We can then go to unfinished business. We have one item listed tonight, which is the update on domain name to GermantownW.gov, previously approved on December 21st at the 2020 Village Board Meeting. And for us, we have a presentation on, can I? Aaron Hurn.
Okay. Thank you so much. So this is just a quick update. Back last December, the board approved changing our domain to GermantownWI.gov. This is for security purposes. This does protect us better as a whole. Our website, it's harder to get a .gov than what we currently have. So going forward, we're just starting the process now, and this will take about a month. Hopefully, we can go live in September, but even after that, we'll be able to receive emails to our email addresses as they are currently. But we will start the slow process of educating the community to let them know that we're changing all of this. This goes for our emails, and this goes for our website as well.
Questions?
What?
No questions? All right. Thank you. Next item then on the agenda is New Business. We start with New Business, item A. Ordinance 08-2021, rezoning from A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District and Two-Lot Certified Survey Map Application and a Conditional Use Permit 06-2021 to allow an encroachment into the 25-foot wetland and 75-foot navigable waterway setback for Capstone Quadrangle Development Company, Agent for MLG/RMS Limited Partnership Property Owner, 52.5 acres on North 128 West 20943 Holy Hill Road. To give us more information and background on New Business, item A, I'll turn the meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Retzlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you indicated, Mike Favor, representing Capstone Quadrangle Development Company and the property owner, MLG/RMS Limited Partnership, seeking approval of three applications on tonight's agenda, rezoning, a two-lot certified survey map, and a conditional use permit, all as prerequisites for development of a 52-and-a-half-acre business park to be known as Capstone 41, located quarter-mile east of the 41 Holy Hill Road interchange in our gateway corridor. On screen, the site is highlighted in red. It's located, in this graphic, you can see it relative to the sewer service area expansion that was approved back in 2018, and also relative to the TID number seven expansion that was approved earlier this year, 2020. And highlighted in red in the upper-left, just south of. Three applications include a rezoning application that is required to change the property from A1 Agricultural to M1 Limited Industrial, two-lot certified survey map to divide the property into essentially two building sites, Lot 1, 13-and-a-half acres that will be developed as part of Phase 1, and Lot 2, a 33-and-a-half acre placeholder for future development and possible land division as the development occurs. And finally, a conditional use permit to allow some development encroachment into a 25-foot wetland and 75-foot navigable waterway setback. The other graphics didn't help. This one should. It's a fairly recent photograph that shows the site location relative to the Zilber Development to the north on Holy Hill Road, just south of the Zilber 2 and 3 buildings, and the Stratton Building, all completed a few years ago. As I mentioned, the rezoning application is to change the property from A1 to M1 Limited Industrial. This graphic shows the current land use plan map. The area is purple on our map. That's an industrial/office category or classification, and changing the zoning to M1 Limited Industrial is consistent with the current land use plan map. Second application is a proposed certified survey map. Details are shown on the screen, as indicated, dividing it into two building sites or lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, along with a couple of outlots at this point. Lot 1 for a storm basin in the far northwest corner of the property, and Lot 2 through the middle of the property, running north and south, a future private road right-of-way for the main driveway serving the development. This graphic shows the master site plan for the property, includes three buildings to be constructed over two phases with a total of 785,900 square feet of building area for light assembly, manufacturing, e-commerce, and warehouse distribution uses. This graphic shows the phasing plan that's proposed. The area in yellow is Phase 1, that includes a initial spec building of 203,580 square feet, and all of the site improvements, including the main driveway or roadway through the site, stormwater basins, utility extensions, and some stabilization on the Lot 2 area, prepping that for future development, as well as removing the existing farm buildings and structures that exist on what's now shown as Lot 2. Finally, the third application is the Conditional Use Permit application. It's part of the process. A wetland delineation was done for the property, given the amount of wetlands that we know exist on the property to the west and south, the MMSD property. And as shown on this graph, highlighted in dent color, are wetland area boundaries that are shown along the west and south perimeter of the site. The proposed Phase 1 development includes some encroachment into the village's enforced 25-foot wetland and 75-foot navigable waterway setbacks. Development activity is limited to grading and some parking lot improvement. No wetlands are to be filled as part of this encroachment, just into the setback areas. A total of .891 acres of impact are proposed. Developer proposes to exceed the 2-to-1 ratio for mitigation. They're going to mitigate it at 2.5 to 1 ratio and provide 2.23 acres of mitigation comprised of restoration of the impacted areas with native plantings and stormwater basin plantings around the two basins, as shown on the screen, highlighted in the light green. Some final comments. As I indicated, Capstone Quadrangle is requesting approval of Phase 1 development only. Subsequent development on Lot 2 would require additional site plan review and approval by the Plan Commission. Phase 1, as I mentioned, includes removal of all the farm structures and site restoration, initial 203,000 spec building, stormwater basins, landscaping along Holy Hill Road as part of Lot 1, and the Outlet 1 stormwater basin, and grading stabilization and storm basin construction on Lot 2. Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the rezoning from A1 Agricultural to M1 Limited Industrial. Also, the Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the two-lot certified survey map as proposed, subject to one condition. And finally, the Plan Commission recommendation on the conditional use permit is to recommend approval of the CUP to allow encroachment into the setback areas, subject to three conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, questions?
I make a motion to accept New Business A. Do you want to take them separately, Mr. President?
It's up to you. It's up to the board. You take them all together, or you can take each one as its own motion?
Take them all together, and that's somebody else to do something.
Make your motion, and if you can see how it stands.
Very good. Thank you.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the zoning change, the two-lot certified survey map, and the conditional use permit. Any discussion on that motion? No discussion? Presentation. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yea.
Opposed, raise your hands. Two opposed. Motion carries. Next item under New Business is Item B, Certified Survey Map for Home Path Financial LP, property owner of 2.33 acres on Bittersweet Trail, Outlot, Outlot, CSM 4988, four-lot certified survey map to create four single-family lots as part of the Heritage Park North subdivision. To give us some more background and information on this new business item, I'll turn the meeting over to our Associate Planner, Emily Zant.
Thank you. The proposed CSM is located generally east of Division Road, north of Revere Lane, at the south end of Bittersweet Trail, excuse me. The site zoning is RS5. The area subject to the proposed CSM was included as a part of the preliminary plat for Heritage Park North subdivision, which was approved back in April of 2019. While the preliminary plat was approved, approval of the CSM was deferred by the owner. Home Path Financial has since acquired the property, subject to the Heritage Park North subdivision plat and the CSM, and will be developing the entire 35-lot neighborhood. As the proposed CSM is to be a part of the Heritage Park North subdivision, the four residential lots created shall be included as part of the development agreement to be submitted to the village prior to the final plat submission for the remaining 31 lots. This has been added by staff as a condition of approval. All four proposed residential lots created by the CSM meet the requirements of the RS5 single-family residential district, and these lots are located within the urban service area and will be served by village water and sewer. The Public Works Department did have some comments, including engineering memo, which corrections have been added as a condition of approval, and the water utility does require that all underground facilities be located by the developer and added to Germantown's GIS system. So it was the Plan Commission's recommendation to approve the four-lot certified survey map to extend Bittersweet Trail right-of-way to the south and to create four residential lots as part of the Heritage Park North subdivision, subject to two conditions.
Motion to approve New Business B.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Question. What's different? I mean, there was, in the first proposal for plat, there were, you know, land that was subdivided there. What's different from this one from the last one? Have they changed the size of the lots, or why is this one coming separate and not part of the whole like the last one?
Sure. So originally, this land was owned by a separate owner, I guess. And so I think since the CSM had already been completed and actually submitted, and then asked to be deferred, I think they're just going forward with that. This is the same, the configuration is the same as what was presented in the preliminary.
It seemed, it's the same, I think, in lot size, but if I remember correctly, I thought the lot lines lined up from front to back. So as those lot line came across, I don't remember them splitting the ones on the backside. I thought they were pretty much in line.
I did look into that today, and these are consistent with what was approved with the preliminary plat.
Okay.
The lower two lots do line up with the lot lines to the west.
Okay. And then on RS5, is the zoning, what is the zoning of the subdivision that's behind that? Meaning it would be to the west?
I believe that's RS5 as well.
And then the one that's considered Country Meadows, which is to the east?
I would have to verify, but I think RS5.
So it's not a smaller subdivision than what's surrounding?
Nope. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning.
I know that, and for full disclosure, this does back up to the property where I live. Many of the neighbors' concerns for not only the whole subdivision, but for these particular lots, because they are directly my neighbors, is drainage. So as we go forward and look at future plats and go through improvements on this subdivision, it's very important that we watch the drainage and the elevation so that there aren't water issues that don't exist today. There is a small, I would call it a small area that stays wet. I don't know if I'd call it a wetland, but I know it stays wet, so I'd be interested to see how they handle that and what they do with it, because right now, everything drains fairly well to the lower sections towards Revere as it goes south, and we really don't want to see, my neighbors don't want to see changes made to it that would cause issues or water to back up in their yards. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under New Business is Item C, Water Rate Increase, with Vicki Helenbrand from Baker Tilly. Before we have the presentation from Ms. Helenbrand, we will have some introductory comments from our village administrator.
Thank you. And yes, Ms. Helenbrand is on WebEx with us. Because of the short notice that we were able to give her, she was unable to attend in person, but she is here to help answer any questions. Just for ease of presentation, I'll be going through a few slides with the Village Board this evening, but again, our consultant, who's the expert in this area, is available to try to chime in, and any of the difficult questions, I'll pass on to her. But first, let me kind of walk through a bit of a timeline while we're getting the PowerPoint up on screen. Last Thursday, late afternoon, we received a communication from staff from the Public Service Commission informing us of their recommendation to the Public Service Commission. And consistent with what we had heard in the past and what was communicated to the board, the PSC staff is recommending a two-step rate increase, the first step being $1,154,066 increase, and the second step being a $256,943 rate increase. Some additional information that we were made aware of is that the first step would be, will be effective within 90 days of the PSC approval, and the second step would be effective when the new tower and booster station that are currently under construction And the second step would be effective when the new tower and booster station that are currently under construction become operational. If the PSC approves of this increase, the average residential utility bill will increase by $9.51 per month. And that includes the, the cost of the public fire protection, the portion of that expense that will be included on the direct build on the utility bill as approved by the, the village board last month. That recommended increase includes a rate of return of 4.9%. And that generates of that $1,154,000, $1,195,848 that is, that's for capital improvements and infrastructure replacement in the water utility. So that, that's the amount of money that the PSC is indicating the water utility needs in order to maintain a, an acceptable replacement schedule for things like water main, pumps, wells, towers, et cetera. To give you an idea of, and that's a large dollar amount. But to give you an idea of what that, what that money does and what it accomplishes. If you look at the total amount of assets that the water utility owns, it's about $46 million in infrastructure. The cost of all of the infrastructure that the water utility is responsible for is about $46 million. So using that, you know, roughly $1.2 million means that there'd be a replacement cycle of about 38 and a half years. So that every 38 and a half years, if the, the water utility spends that money for capital replacement for infrastructure projects, the, the system will be, will be replaced and keeping it up to date and, and safe and functional. Moving on to the next slide. So where, where do we go from here? The PSC informed us that they're scheduling a public hearing on, on the rate increase in mid-September. That's why we kind of pushed this on the agenda here this Monday. That this is the last village board meeting before the PSC will be considering this, this rate increase in mid-September. They will include a public hearing where Village of Germantown residents will be able to participate and, and provide input on the rate increase. When we're informed of the date, we'll post that information on the public hearing on the village website. We'll put it on the Facebook page. We'll communicate it by, you know, any means that we have available to us to make sure that the public is aware of it. It's important to note that the PSC will be acting on the application at the September meeting. They will either be approving it, approving their staff recommendations or denying them. And if that is, if they do approve it, that rate effect, that rate is to take effect within 90 days. So what staff would do at that point, if the rate increase is approved, is to put this into the billing system for the final quarter of, of 2021. So people would see it on their bills that they get in early January. So that's what the timing looks like. There are some options that are available for the village board tonight. The village board, as I think we've mentioned in some of the, the previous meetings, does not approve or, or not approve the, the rate increase. That, that the PSC has, has responsibility for that, and they will be acting on that in September. However, the village board can direct staff to request that the PSC, one of the things that they will be looking at is that 4.9% rate of return. And that is one of the, one of the things that they could potentially change during their meeting in September. If the board directs me to do so, then I would submit that request to the PSC and ask them to modify that 4.9% rate of return. A reduction in the rate of return would reduce the increase that customers are going to see on their water bills. But it would also reduce the funding available for capital replacements. So potentially delaying some, some needed replacements of water mains, pumps, wells, programmable logic control systems, all of the things that the, the water utility relies on to, to provide safe and, and consistent drinking water. I've completed on the next slide, an analysis of what those alternatives are and, and what that would look like for the village board. The, the, in the, in the first column, from the left, we've got a 4.9% rate of return. That's what the Public Service Commission staff is recommending to the Public Service Commission. As I mentioned earlier, that would, on an annual basis, provide about $1,195,848 for capital projects for the replacement of the infrastructure. With that amount of funding, the, what I, what I would refer to as the implied system replacement cycle would be 38 and a half years. And that rate of return would also lead to an increase in the average, in the water bill for the average resident of about $9.51 per month. And that's the baseline, so there's no savings. If, if the village board takes no action, that's what the Public Service Commission will, will act on, and, and that would be the, the baseline that we're looking at. I've listed three alternatives with lower rates of return that the village board could consider. 4%, 3.5%, and, and 3%. Under a 4% rate of return, the funds available, excuse me, would be about $1,052,000. That would provide enough funding to basically replace the water system about every 43.7 years. The total monthly increase for the average resident would be $8.33 instead of $9.51. So that would, it would reduce that increase by $1.18 per month. Under a 3.5% scenario, it would provide $972,000 for capital projects. The, the replacement cycle would be 47.3 years. The increase that the average resident would see in their water bill is $7.67 a month, which is about $1.84 less than that $9.51. And under a 3% scenario, there'd be $749,000 available for capital projects each year. The, and the replacement cycle would be about 61.4 years. The average resident would see a, a monthly increase of, of about $7. And the reduction from the baseline of 4.9% would be $2.50 per month. So I'll leave, I'll leave that slide up. But basically, the, the purpose of this presentation was twofold, to give you an update on where we are in the process and, and what we can expect coming forward in the next few weeks and, and months. And secondly, to present this, this list of alternatives that are available for the, for the village board to consider and, and look for direction from the board on how you'd like staff to proceed.
Questions? Justy Chan Miller.
So my understanding is that the PSC came back and recommended the 4.9% increase?
PSC staff, yes.
The PSC staff. Okay. And did we send in any application or request for rate increase or?
The, the process started, I, I, I don't have that slide in front of me, but over a year ago with an application that, that the village submitted to the PSC. After that, the PSC collects and the, the staff reviews all kinds of data that we provided. They look at the lists of all the assets we have, the age of the assets, the, the replacement cost of the assets. They look at all of our revenue streams, and they develop what they call a rate case model, where they plug in different information, and then that's how they develop their, their recommendations for the PSC.
What is our annual expenditures for keeping up the water system that we currently have? What has been the average?
The, in the past few years, the, the rate of return for the water utility has been roughly zero, meaning that there has not been funding available for capital replacement and improvements. The, the revenues have been generally covering operating expenses, but, and the, they have not been adequate to provide funding to, to replace aging equipment. Whether that's some of the things that, that we're looking at, I think, are, are more immediate replacement needs. If you remember, some of the presentations that the Water Superintendent Paul Haugen made, some of the equipment that's in our, our wellhouses, programmable, programmable logic controllers, some of the, the water treatment equipment, the water meters that are in people's homes are, are outdated and not generally not functioning as well as they should. So that would be another item that is, is due for request. We also have many miles of ductile iron water main that's underground in the village that is, that is, that needs to be looked at for replacement over the, over the next several years. So the, I can pull out, it would take me a moment to, to look up the numbers, but I could pull out the, the exact numbers. But, but in general terms, the water utility's been able to cover its operating costs, but it's not been generating enough revenue for those types of, of capital replacement needs.
Well, we just passed purchase, a purchase order for 2,900 meters, and that was going to complete all the water meters, correct, in the village?
Correct. The, the meters are failing, and that, that purchase has not been processed. The village board approved it. But we requested that approval in anticipation that, since the rate application was submitted, that, that there, it would be approved, and upon approval, we would place the order to get those meters.
So they haven't placed the order for the meters?
That's, that's correct. We don't have the cash to pay for it.
Just got a new, correct me if I'm wrong. Water filtration tank of some type for tower number three. It's another huge tank for, I don't, I think it's Radon? Is it? Tour? Anyway.
There have, there have been some purchases. The water utility has been making some purchases. But, you know, not of the, the scale or the magnitude that's necessary to, to keep up with adequate placement cycle for that, that equipment.
Further questions? Justy Kaminsky.
I'll comment more than a question. When I look at this chart, between the 4.9 and anything else on this chart, if you, why wouldn't we make that investment in our future of the water utility? The, the difference being, what, $114 a year versus $84.12, if you want, would be 701. So for a difference of $30, we have this assurance that we're going to be able to put away the adequate money to replace all of the things we know we're going to replace. I mean, look at the city of Milwaukee. Look at other, we're not a young village anymore. Parts of us are quite old, as we're finding out with the sewer lines and everything else running from the homes. These ductile iron pipes are going to go, and they have to be replaced. And we have to have money in the bank for that. And when I look at something like for $114 spread over a year, over 12 water bills, that's nothing as far as that insurance goes, as far as I'm concerned. Be foolish not to support the 4.9.
Further comments? Questions? Justy Hudson.
I, I apologize. When will that be so we could hear our citizens?
The Public Service Commission will be setting a public hearing date. And they have not set that yet. It'll be sometime, I believe, the week of September 6th or the week of September 13th. And as soon as that information is available, we'll, we'll, we'll distribute that information on the village website, on our Facebook page. We'll email the trustees, and, and that would be the, the opportunity for village residents to express any concerns, any, provide any input into the process. The PSC is the, is the decision-making body in this case. So I would recommend that, that, that residents express their, their viewpoints to the, to the Public Service Commission.
No, I certainly understand that. Not, not having gone through this, I think the last time we went through this was in 2010. Are those hearings held in our village or is that in Madison?
They are, they are not held here in the village. There are phone lines and, and, you know, online opportunities to participate.
And those are not, they, they won't be set up until at the earliest?
Yep, your microphone's not on. Your microphone, and you broke it already?
Oh, no, it's okay. My finger's bad.
Can you borrow your microphone to him, please, Justy Myers, so we can hear and other people that are listening can hear him?
I apologize. No. So there, there, that opportunity for our citizens to speak up has, has not yet been put, put forth yet. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The PSC has not set that up yet. They did indicate to us in the communication that we got Thursday afternoon that it would be coming up. They listed several alternative dates, and they asked for Germantown staff's availability for those dates. We sent them back. Our, our availability, I would expect that it should be sometime this week that we'll find out what that date is.
Okay. Thank, uh, thank you. And then just a couple of questions about the, the numbers here. So is the grid that we have displayed right now, are these our only options? So for example, could we vote to do 4.9% over three years? An equal increase over three years? Or is it a yes or no type thing?
I, I'm gonna actually phone a friend on that question. That's a good question. I'm gonna see if Ms. Hildebrand can, if she was, if she heard that question, if she could help me out with a response to that.
Yes. Unfortunately, the PSC doesn't really allow for a phase-in of the rate increase. So it is sort of all or nothing at this point. You can always file another rate increase a couple of years down the road and kind of cycle it that way. But it's time consuming and it's expensive. So I would prefer kind of doing it in one fell swoop here. And, and as someone mentioned, the last large increase was in 2010. And there were many reasons for that, but at this point now, it's, it's time to play catch-up a bit.
And then I, thank you. And then two, two more questions. So we had our last big increase in 2010, but since that time, we have had smaller increases, which don't have to go through the PSC process, is my understanding. Are, are those limited to a certain percent, or how are those rate increases determined?
There, there is, communities do have an option of increasing rates up to 3% each year without a rate increase. The last time the village increased rates under that lower threshold was 2014.
So, so for example, we could increase 1.9% now and not go through the PSC next year and increase an additional 3%? Is that, am I understanding what you're saying correctly?
I, yeah, on the first, we can increase 3% next year. I guess I would defer to this Helenbrand again on the, you know, the first part of your question as to whether we could implement a 1.9% increase.
Just to make 4.9%, it was just easy math. Just to make 4.9%, it was just easy math.
Yeah, so a couple of points. The 4.9% is the rate of return that allows you to have funding to replace your system and do the maintenance and the items that are needed. So the 4.9 is not the percentage increase, that increase is different. The 4.9 is just the rate of return. So going back to the the comment or the question related to the, it's called the simplified rate case, and it's a just a one-page application, there are limits on how many of those you can do. You can't do them more than five years after your last rate case. So 2014 was really the last year that Germantown was able to use that mechanism. And then there's there's some other rules that are in place. In this case, we have a two-step rate increase already in the PSC's hands, and we won't be able to file the the inflationary increase, the the small, it's 3% or less increase, until one full year of the step-two rates being in place. So there's a bit of time before we can use that mechanism again.
Okay, thank you. And then my my last question has to do with the system replacement cycle and the calculation used to to come up with those numbers. And and please tell me if I'm I'm correct or incorrect. So it it looks to me like it's, according to the numbers in the grid, we have no profit or additional revenue in the water utility right now. So it is a completely flat equation year over year, and this would be the sole generation of profit or excess revenue. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, but I might ask again Ms. Hallebrand to kind of weigh in on that particular question.
Right, at this point, yeah, it's correct. Just the cash outflow of the village right now, so the amount that is used for operation and maintenance expenses, and then cash, you have a little bit of debt service in the utility, and then you pay, of course, the the pilot or the tax equivalent to the village general fund. Once those are paid, there's essentially very little, if any, funds left over to put back in the system to sort of replace it, which then causes delayed maintenance and and a whole host of other issues.
And and how long has that situation been going on for?
It's been a couple of years. So part of the delay in sort of understanding what the rate increase would need to be was the timing of the projects related to the well and the tower. The village is constricted by PSC rules that you can't get a rate increase for a plant too far in advance before construction. And then, as most of you are aware, there's a large industrial customer whose volume fluctuates quite a bit, and there was a little bit of uncertainty about that that also impacted the timing of the rate case as well.
And my my hopefully last question is, are the rates for the commercial users and the rates for the residential users going up in parallel to one another? Or are the residential users getting at a larger rate increase than our commercial users?
Actually, and and I think Ms. Hallebrand may be able to confirm this, but if I'm if I'm reading the PSC report correctly, I believe that there's a slightly higher rate increase for the commercial and industrial users than there are for residential users.
That's correct. So the Public Service Commission designs the rates based on the cost of providing service. So what happens when there's been, the last time a rate case was done, a full rate case with the cost of service, was 2010. And then based on just the nuances within your system, the costs are allocated by the Public Service Commission without any political influence or any other outside influence, based on the cost of providing that service. So that is sort of out of the village's hands. But yes, it's correct, the residential is going up slightly less than commercial and industrial.
Can I ask one more question?
Unless you say how many more you're gonna ask, no, I'm just kidding, go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
The new tower is to be completed in 2022, is that is that correct? And then the new rate increase, the additional smaller rate increase would go into effect in the second or third quarter of 2022? And then we would have up to 2025 for smaller increases? Am I understanding that correctly, without having to go through the PSC?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Hallebrand to to answer that question.
Yeah, so with a step-two increase, it's a little bit unique, and that's probably a question we need to clarify with the Public Service Commission, but you're generally allowed up to five years. Yeah, so we'll we'll have to to clarify that. I'm hopeful that the time between the step-one and the step-two doesn't eat up a couple of those years, but that's a good question that we'll have to clarify. But somewhere around four, four to five years of those smaller increases, and we would recommend that, to try to stay on top of just the inflationary costs and other things, because we know it's hard for people to not have an increase for 10 years, or at least not a substantial increase, and then all of a sudden get the one like we're talking about today.
Thank you, I I appreciate your patience.
Further questions?
Present, just I'll just jump in to answer one of Trusty Hudson's questions as well, and to just kind of correct a little bit, administrative, correct law. The public hearing, when it's held, will actually be, one of the requirements typically is, is that we hold a location here to do that, so folks would be able to come here and participate in that hearing. PSC staff will be in Madison, because it'll be telephonic. With COVID, obviously, that's changed a little bit, and so folks do have, I think, I I assume it's it'll be like what we've seen in other instances, where they'll have the ability to even do it from their home locations as well. But there there will be a location here at Village Hall for them to do that. The other thing that I can tell you is, is that the written public comment portion, if if folks don't want to speak, but instead just want to submit written comments, that's actually already open. If you just go to the PSC's website, there's a box right on the main page, submit public comments, and you just follow that, and you could submit it in writing.
Is is the ability for the, sorry, another question, is the ability for the public to come here and make their comment, is that on a set date and time, when we can be here also to hear from them?
Yeah, it's it's a public hearing, so anybody can be there.
Thank you.
And we'll we'll add that a link to the the site for public comment to the village website and get that information out right away. And I think that was more of a clarification than a correction, but.
Just for for point of reference, there there are a few people on this board that remember going through this back in 2010, and at that time, we were shown projections of what, if we kept the water utility at the level of increase that we were talking about, of where those monies would run out, which would be about now. And at that time, I guess that the board felt that was far enough in the future that things might change, or we'd get additional rate users, and it would make up the difference. But they've voted not to increase it enough for a lot of the same reasons and angst that everybody feels here in in regards to to adding costs to people's monthly bills and and expenditures. But it came to, it came true that it ran out of money, because it wasn't funded well enough, and we saw the projections, and they were presented very well, and we choose to ignore it. And at times, we are also presented with the information of if we don't put enough increase, now you'll have to do a makeup later, which will be substantial. And people tend to object to larger increases over a longer period of time than they would on smaller increases that help to to make catch up a little bit more, I don't, it's never really acceptable, but it it is in smaller bites. And right now, we're at that point where we have created the situation that puts us here today. And so this board now has the ability to choose of how you want to handle it for the next years going forward, and how you want to cover it. My understanding is, based on we, because we have a choice to have a utility, there are some responsibilities that that we need to step up to, and one of those is to be able to cover our our costs for replacement. In the past, we've had some advantages of TIF that have created or allowed us to have these projects be covered by those costs. There was a time in this village where we only had one extension of water going underneath the freeway, and it went down the county line side, over by County Line Road. And when it broke or had an issue, everybody on the west side of County Line, all the way down to the end, had no water, just just like that. And we never had a backup, and we never had a loop. And until we put in TIF 6, which allowed us with that funding to put that second entry across, we were then able to have a backup system. But before that, we ran on one line that fed all the way out there and then dispersed out, and it had several issues on it. Because it dead-ended, water quality was poor down on that end of it. Because we were able to put that second line in with TIF monies, it improved not only water quality but pressure, but also gave us that that point of of still allowing the utility to work and and service if one of the two would go out. And before, it was never that option. So we've been lucky to to use some of our 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 ability to to build and and create TIF, and in some cases, road repairs to do the water and utility repairs that we we need to do. But those days are coming far and fewer between, and we're expanding our utility into the new developments that we have, whether they're residential, or they're commercial, or they're industrial. And part of that expansion is to, is cover your replacement value. And I think this board needs to look at that carefully and make sure that we plan well enough in the future, so that whatever future board sits here 10, 15 years from now, they're not in the same place. And that's just, you know, based on on longevity of being here, and I just kind of remember and having similar similar confusion and asking a lot of the same questions that I'm hearing now, which shows that, you know, you're you're thinking about it right, the information is being presented to you correctly, and you're asking the right questions. Now we need to look at what we want to do going forward.
Further questions? What do you want from us tonight?
If the village board would like staff to submit a request to the PSC to change the rate of return from 4.9% to another option, I'd like some direction on that tonight.
A motion, or is that a?
That's just a statement.
Just a statement?
Right, based on what you see here?
Yeah.
Are you are you acceptable at the 4.9% percentage of return, based on on what it does in replacement years of, you know, at that rate? Or are you looking for something different?
We should stick with the 4.9, the 138 years, the $9.51. This rate that we've given at all meetings.
Motion for that, or you just need a direction?
And the motion, if it's something different, I thought Steve wanted.
That's correct.
Right, yeah, I would say only if there's some different, well, I I guess certainly having the board vote affirmatively that they're okay with the 4.9 would probably be helpful to the PSC as well. However, if we don't take any action, the PSC will just assume that 4.9 is okay, and that's what they'll use.
Make the motion to stick with the 4.9.
Motion made in second. Trusty Hudson, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to wait till after the public hearing, so we can hear from people that we represent and what their thoughts are.
Get it, then be.
The 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 PSC will be taking action the night of the the public hearing, so the...
I apologize, I don't mean to to cut you off, so if the PSC is going to be taking action the night of hearing, then the public hearing is meaningless.
It it's a public hearing for the PSC. The PSC is the decision maker, ultimately. The 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 public has the ability to impact the process, both through discussing with you folks what their preferences were. I assume that as we've been going through this process with the various items that have been on the agenda, that you have heard from folks about their opinions. Likewise, they have the ability to impact the process by impacting the decision makers themselves, the PSC, by participating in the public hearing. So they have kind of the two roles and abilities to do that, but it is a public hearing for the PSC and and their decision.
Thank you.
No motion in a second? Is there any discussion on that motion? No discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Unopposed. Motion carries. That takes care of everything that's needed on this new business item?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Helen Brand, for joining us and for your input. We appreciate it. Next item on our new business is Item D, Report from the Village Administrator on COVID-19. Brecklow.
Thank you. Thought it was appropriate, given the the amount of information that has been out related to some current trends in in COVID-19, to provide the village board with some information, basically a status update on 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 where we are in the village and in in Washington County. And this is also an opportunity that if the village board would like to change any direction or provide direction for staff on actions to take, that you would, this would be a a time to provide that direction as well. So we could move to the the next slide. This is a chart that I've been keeping for almost 18 months now, on the number of cases of COVID within Washington County is the the total is the top line. The lower lines are the other communities. It's a little bit difficult to see Germantown is 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 a blue line that's kind of bunched in with some others on the bottom. I think the primary takeaway from this slide, or some of the key takeaways, is that you can see in recent weeks here, we are trending back upwards in Washington County for the number of cases. We are not near where we were during some of the the more difficult months of last fall. However, I would also state that just we appear to be in, if you look at some of the states that are further ahead in this curve than we are, Florida, Texas, Mississippi, some other states like that, it appears, it seems to me to be likely that we will see some additional increases in the number of cases that are occurring in in coming weeks. And that is something that that we'll have to to deal with in terms of how it can affect not only the the health of the community, but also village operations, and as as the cases can affect staff as well. On the next slide, some other key points, we have not had any new cases of of COVID among the village staff in in several months now at this point. I I didn't have an opportunity to go back and and check through the records to see when the last case was, but it was some time ago. Also, just currently, masks are optional for village staff and visitors to village facilities, that there was a directive for masks for staff and visitors that the village board had adopted, but that expired, I believe, in June, and was not renewed. And then also, we did a survey of staff earlier this year, I believe it was in March or April. At that point, approximately 80% of village staff indicated that they were either in the process of getting the first or second second vaccination, or were planning to get fully vaccinated. So we don't track that on a on a any regular basis for our employees, but indications are that the 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 majority of village employees are fully vaccinated. So that is extensive, it's a it's a brief report, but I can do my best to answer any questions. but I can do my best to answer any questions that you may have, or if you have feedback or direction for staff on any changes in procedures. This would be an opportunity for the board to provide that.
Board, questions, comments, concerns? Trustee Hudson? We're all concerned. All right, thank you. Thank you for that report. Next item under new business is Item E, Redistricting Update and Timeline.
It's my item.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Friday, I met with the county clerk, as well as a member of the GIS systems from the county to help with the mapping. We just received population data last week showing that the village is now at 20,934. This is a 6% increase since the last census. Normally, this information is received in March, rather than this late, because we do have redistricting. Just to give you an idea, on the next slide, I show the deadline that we have before us is November 23rd. That's the normal notice that is due prior to the next year's elections. So that's the deadline that we have before us. And for myself, that deadline is actually moved back even two more weeks because of our publication requirements with our paper. So I have to have items in place by November 10th in order to meet that publication. Week of August 30th, I will work with the county GIS department on the census blocks. This is based on population blocks that we will receive, showing the actual population, not registered voters. September 16th, there will be a county public hearing. They do have publication requirements prior to that as well. September 20th is the next general government and finance meeting. And at that time, there will be a ward and district plan to general government and finance to go forward with the census tract data included with that. October 4th will be the village ward plan, district plan ordinance to the village board. There's a notice requirement prior to that as well. So everything is very, very tight timeline. As I have census tract data available, I'm happy to forward that through to you. But at this time, I'm. And then that brings me to that November 23rd. Very tight deadline.
Questions? Trustee Myers?
Deanna, so are you saying you get the information from the county, and that's our input?
No, I'll have the county, they will give us the information. It'll be based on population. Of course, you can have input. They are the ones that hold the public hearing, not the village. So you're more than welcome to go to that public hearing, but of course, you have a say here as well. But as soon as I have it, I'm happy to put it on the website or.
What do we actually, what will you actually be doing when you get that information from the county?
The information that I will receive will have the actual blocks of population, and that's where you decide how the lines are drawn. But they basically will be giving some kind of guidelines on that based on the county supervisor lines as well. One of the things that I look at too is how ballot styles, we're going to have a big difference. Think about last April, there were 10 different ballot styles. So that's what goes into my consideration, as well as you want it to be even as possible among all of the districts. It's actually the population that's that information.
What they try to do is have each area have the same amount of people, correct? But it doesn't have to be exact, but something, is there a percentage that it has to be close to, or whatever?
Yeah, you're also correct. Because some of the, some of those tracts and, I'll say, blocks are already preset. So it's a matter of trying to see how many distribute, so it's as even as possible.
Thank you, Deanna.
Is that a redistricting of federal, state, county, and village lines of district?
All of it.
So if somebody lived close to the edge of a ward or a district, and it changed to where it was moved them out, what happens? Say you're in District 3, and all of a sudden, you're in District 2, what happens?
Well, that particular voter may have to go to a different polling location. But once we get to this point, then after that, polling locations are set based on where they're at within the districts. There would be a notice, something for that particular voter, so they would know where to go.
Okay, what if you're a trustee?
So there is consideration given, but if you're a trustee, you may end up having to finish that term, and then the next term, you may be in a different district. Been through this before, it's not a fun.
The last time, Dennis, remind me, the last time was, did the county supervisor shrink because they chose to have less representation, or were some people kind of districted out?
From 29 to, from 30 to 26, which they ended up doing per se.
Okay.
There is also a situation that they're considering going to 22 next year.
Okay.
Because it's after 10 years and such, but they've already, the executive board has already voted on that to actually go forward with that and see what happens.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Is this November of this year? So this becomes effective when for the redistricting portions then?
Well, it has to be effective by December 1st, because that's when papers can be taken out. So it's got to be effective by December.
The seats become effective with the first terms in April when they're elected. But because you have to have your notice out, you have to have it before the notices go out. The only other thing I would.
If I was, as an example, if I was district, or my district would change, my term would end at the next election period in April. Is that?
I thought you would finish your term.
I'll finish the entire term?
That's my understanding.
I'd have to go back and look. It's been 10 years since we've dealt with this. And thankfully, last time, we didn't have that happen in any of our communities. So I don't remember what the rule is off the top of my head. The only other thing I would add is just be ready for changes. Obviously, there's already some federal court litigation involving the state lines. There may be litigation that trickles down into some of the state and local, or county and local races as well. There may be legislative answers to some of this as well. So this is just what we have. Effectively, Washington County is taking the same approach most counties seem to be taking, which is, we're just going to let the state do whatever they want to do. We're going to set our lines and run with it. So that's kind of the approach that they're taking because they're hoping that that'll be the fastest way, so.
Not a lot of time, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions, so we can go on to the next items of new business. There's Item F, which is Meridian Germantown LLC, Walmart Stores Inc., Claim of Excessive Real Estate Tax Settlement. The Village Board may convene in the closed session per Wisconsin Statute 19.85, subsection 1, sub-paragraph G, "For the purpose of conferring with legal counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village with respect to litigation in which it is involved or is likely to become involved, and then may reconvene in the open session to take such action as it deems appropriate." And then we also have Item G.
Mr. President, it may be that we don't need to go into closed session on F, so maybe.
Make a motion that we go into closed session for G only.
Well, we haven't read G yet. He would have to read it first. But the thought would be, since we believe that the settlement that was achieved in mediation is consistent with what we discussed in closed session last month, that perhaps we can just present the settlement to you. Assuming that it's okay, we would just accept the motion to accept it at that point. If there's discussion, that would be the point where we could then go into closed session. And assuming that that takes place, we can then go to G after that and go into closed session for that.
Okay, should I read G now then?
I would just wait to see what happens.
Okay, then let's go to our new business item F.
And Mr. President, I can provide an update on the results of the mediation that took place last week. Attorney Garing, who, and actually, he was unable to be here tonight. He is, he did give me a cell phone number. If we, if the board does have questions of him, he is available, we could reach him. But we did go through the mediation process last week, and both Meridian and I representing the village came to an agreement that I would recommend, which would set the value of the property at $62.50 per square foot for 2019 and 2020, and $60 per square foot for 2021. That's very close to where the property was assessed. There would be a small refund that the village would owe to Meridian. It would be, the village portion would be $1,500 for 2019 and for 2020, and approximately $3,000 for 2021. This is, as the village attorney mentioned, consistent, the direction the village board gave before we went into mediation. They're fairly small dollar amounts, and my recommendation to the village board would be that you accept the results of mediation, and we move forward.
Board?
Make a motion to that effect.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? You do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers? Trustee Baum? Trustee Hudson? Trustee Kaminski? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that then takes us to our last item under new business. Item G, Potential Tax Increment Development Incentive for the potential tenant or the property located at the northwest corner of Goldendale and Holy Hill Roads, a Dickman Development property owner. The Village Board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin Statute 19.85, subsection 1, sub-paragraph E, "For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then may convene or reconvene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate." Board? Motion made and seconded, any discussion, including whom?
The village attorney and the village clerk, community development director. It should stay, and other than that, I, yeah, I think that's all we need for staff.
That's all right with the motion? And with the second? All right, any discussion on that? If not, we can do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Miller? Trustee Baum? Trustee Hudson? Trustee Kaminski? Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, before we adjourn into closed session, the next regular Village Board meeting will be on Monday, September 20th at 7:00 PM. There is also, as it's listed here, a tentative joint Village Board and school board meeting scheduled for August 30th. When will we know for sure that's going to occur?
Hopefully, in the next couple of days. And I believe the meeting will occur. We're confirming where it'll be located. I've been talking with the superintendent to see if we're able to fit all of the members of both boards in this room around the dais so that we can broadcast it, both on WebEx and on cable. We thought that would be advantageous for the public, so we're going to try to make that work. But there's just a few logistics like that that we're working out. But I think it's, we should have that wrapped up in the next couple of days.
Okay, great. And then there will not be a Village Board meeting on Monday, September 6th, because it'll be Labor Day. So that concludes tonight's meeting, except for the closed session portion. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you all for watching, and have a good night. Turn off your mic.